And the doc will be here in just a minute, she had an emergency, but she'll be walking in the door in a minute. Public comment?
No comments, sir.
No comments? Budget workshop, is that you?
Yes, sir.
I've added.
All right, we'll begin tonight's workshop. If we look at our budget calendar, you guys started this process back in submitting goals and objectives. And then on March thirteenth, we had a revision of goals and objectives workshop. Revenues and major expenditures, updates and outlook on both of those. April eighth was expenditures workshop, April seventeenth was combined revenues and expenditures. And then your budget message, based on us being able to have a meeting today, which was when all commissioners could attend, meant that the budget message had to be delivered no later than May twenty ninth, you received it on the twenty seventh. We're having the revisions today for anything that the board wants to revise. And then the public hearing and scheduled to pass the budget is at the June regular meeting. Your total budget for the next fiscal year is proposed at thirty one million, seven hundred and forty three thousand dollars and seven hundred and forty three thousand, twenty seven dollars. The budget priorities are high quality infrastructure, community improvements, accessibility, communications and growing human capital. And that was the combination of your goals and what were specific topics that you were focusing on. So as required by the statute, your funds are shown as balanced. Local Budget Fiscal and Control Act, the tax rate is fourteen cents per hundred dollars of valuation. It takes into account contracts bill over for HDR McGill Narlock and Associates and Coen Construction for the Block Q bathroom. It's a proposed in the budget message of an increase in three dollars and ninety cents, the base charge for sewer. And then also removal of the three gallons for water and sewer. Challenges that we see are unknown assistance from other levels of government going forward and inflation. And the budget aligns with your outlined priority areas, which I just showed you in the previous slide. So proposed general fund revenue and expense budget is four point eight million. Highlights for that fund was three hundred thousand dollars for storm design, stormwater design and permitting, police restructuring, additional certifications for personnel, street paving, a hundred thousand dollar transfer to the beach and inlet capital reserve fund and ballistic vest replacement. Your proposed B part fund is five million, seven hundred and fifty seven thousand, four hundred and eighty nine dollars. Highlights for that fund are phasing in new playground equipment, the AIWW Ben Widener project, the concert venue that's proposed on Block Q for construction, finishing the Block Q restroom, starting a pier design and a six hundred thousand dollar transfer to the Beach and Inlet Capital Reserve Fund. Your canal dredging funds, revenues, expenses, those budgets are balanced and stay shuttle, shovel ready. Water and sewer fund, the last time we met, we were at a deficit in that, you're now balanced at two million, eight hundred and seventy three thousand, six hundred and fifty one dollars. Highlights from that fund is that the major expenses are cooling solution for lift station one, ventilation for lift station four, water system repair parts at a hundred and twenty thousand and new tap construction at seventy thousand. Fund thirty one illustrates change rates based on early payoff of seven ninety six. Your sewer lift station fund, which is a capital project fund, fund thirty five goes across budget years for the life of the project. Your capital reserve funds are listed here with each of their amounts that are proposed for the fiscal year. And then to, just to highlight changes since the April seventeenth workshop, so what changed, why did numbers go up or down? Required retirement contribution was more and came out at the state level more than presented, so we had to update numbers based on that. Stormwater, the additional areas of concern contract that McGill's currently working on is not up until July, but they're scheduled for the presentation after that to finish up in August, so some funding will be paid out in next fiscal year for July and August work. Block Q restroom contractor had originally said they'd be at sixty percent by June thirtieth, and then they corrected that and said they will not be that far along. So adjustments had to be made there for what would carry forward in the next fiscal year versus being paid out of this fiscal year. You guys at the May meeting decided to use the services of a bond attorney and financial advisor, so those have been added to the general fund. The inspections department requested that the overtime be increased, travel and training be decreased. It was the delta the same in the overall budget, but most of the classes for their required trainings fall on the weekend and they can't be absent during the week, so we have to account for overtime. And a need to discuss the AIWW crossing project, that's the end of my slides, so I'll entertain on how the board wants to move forward. If you would like me to begin at the end here with discussing the crossing project and then us work our way backwards, we can do that. Or if the board prefers to go in a different direction, I will let you send it back to the mayor and you guys can leave me and how you want us to go forward.
My pleasure, the board.
Your proposals, Tony, start with it.
Okay, so for the Ben Widener project and the B part fund, as your budget is presented in the message, it was at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Usually we do not have, before we go into budget season for the budget message, a number on what that potential contract will be. So if you look under B part expenses and you go to the second full pages of expenses, that's two lines up from the bottom. It says Lockwood folly dredging and it's currently slated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The program manager, Bob Kessler, from the district contacted me, they have what they think is a solid number that. So the government pays for the crossing itself, but we are allowed to piggyback on it and get sand from the Ben Widener, which is what keeps our East End whole. They, they believe that that project, let me walk through this, they believe that project is going to cost one point five million, but normally the state pays seventy five percent of that. So our potential cost right now, based on the information they have, could go up to three hundred and seventy five thousand. So it is the pleasure of the board, I didn't feel comfortable raising the budget that much with just finding out that information and us not having a chance to talk about it. As I see it, you have four options. You can either choose to keep the, you can raise the, this line, Lockwood folly dredging by the delta amount and take it to the new amount by decreasing what you plan to send to the transfer to the beach and inlet capital reserve fund to go for sand on the beach now versus saving for sand on the beach in the future. You can choose to leave your transfer amount the same and just increase your fund balance appropriated to make that line up to what it needs to be for the project. The one that I absolutely would say that don't do, but I have to present it as an option, and then this is the board's choice, is the corps has told us that we could choose not to get the whole amount of sand that's available. That's a bad idea, you always want to put as much sand as available and you can on the beach. And I guess I can stop talking about that one because I see a lot of heads going no, so I'm glad that you take that recommendation and take that off the table. The last one is you could wait until they actually get the contract back, open, I mean get the bids back, open it up, see what it came in at, at that time, and then do a budget amendment into next fiscal year once you get the solid number versus the estimate that they know that's in there now from surveys. So it's really up to the board on how you want to proceed, it just lets me know what I need to do for the budget ordinance moving forward.
Can I, can I just confirm those numbers, because I had a delta of one seventy five, it's a delta of one twenty five now. Because I thought you had said before it was one seventy five delta.
It's. It's three seventy five is what we would have.
Versus two fifty is what we have in the budget, so that's a hundred and twenty five, okay. So I'll, I can just throw, my preference would be to do the fourth, the last option, which is just wait and see what the real numbers are and then deal with them then. So if everyone can, by consensus, we can agree to that. I see Rick nodding his head.
I agree, I think the numbers will float around until we know what they really are, so.
Can I ask one quick question, in the past when we've done this, how close has the corps been in their prognostication compared to when the actual contract came in?
We've never been fortunate enough to get a before look. So we always went into the budget, but when I started hearing at different workshops that sound like they had it, had a number in mind, I said, I need to see your number with your layout. So they went, it's a hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of sand right now, but they, and they're projecting what, you know, the cubic yard price will be based on what they're seeing. But when the contract comes back, the bids come back in, that could change, so. I just didn't.
Yeah, I, I know your preference, so I'm good with waiting till we actually get a number, that way we'll only have to do the one amendment.
That, that works for me, if that's good with the board by consensus, I just didn't want it to get two months into the budget year and I come back and say, hey, we need a budget amendment because this is the number now and the board not to be apprised that I have information that changes the number presently.
By consensus?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
Good job.
Mayor Holden, I'll turn it back over to you because I don't know how the board wants to proceed next.
My pleasure, the board.
Do you want to talk about that?
We talked about why, I'm trying to figure if we're working backwards, is water up next, I think?
I think it's just whatever issue you have.
Okay. We've done some digging on the impact of the water increases and we've come to the conclusion we need to increase the base charge by three ninety to cover the shortage we've got in the budget. But any changes to the rates has a dramatic increase, percent increase in overall water bills. So I think we should just do the base rate, base charge increase and not make any changes at all for the water usage charges, revenues.
First two, two thousand gallons.
Yeah, for, as is, first.
Leave that as is until we.
The rates are the same, it's two thousand gallons, yeah, no charge.
I'm good with that. Can I ask?
Chris?
Chris, a question is that. Shane, waiting a while to go up on that first two thousand gallons of water charge, is there anything intimate that you see that we need right now, or can we wait and move forward on that? Let's do the rate increase now and then we may go up, you know, maybe the first thousand gallons free and then maybe, you know, try to work it out.
I'm good with that, but everything that I feel like is important, we need to take care of the meeting and fill this budget at three dollars and ninety cents. Look, just, you know, about where we need to be on that, and we can look at it and get another day, or at the time, we're just thinking about. Being able to resist the aging, the pressure, maybe trying to create something, that's something we can look at at any time, it's not, we're, see if we just lay all the cards on tables, we're about to see what we're doing. And I will say, I know it's painful, but anytime you're giving some, something away that's included in the charge, if you look at it the same way, it looks, it was bad. Here's what it is, I'm good with, you can build that three ninety.
May I, may I speak, please?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, first of all, I want to thank staff for going through the effort to assess this issue. It was a board request that you guys do that, and I appreciate you guys doing the legwork. I think the concerns that drives this issue are still valid and we need to continue on to look at this. I was initially ready to pull the Band-Aid off on it, but I realized I didn't have enough clarity on what we're specifically going to do. But I don't want to lose sight of this item once it's out of the budget cycle. So what I, if the board so desires, I would like to have it added to the action tracker list that the town manager keeps, so we don't lose sight of it, because I think it's important to start planning for the future. I agree with Chris, I don't think grants for everything are going to continue to be available and we would hate to have a huge expense and then have to do a special assessment. I'd rather start, we just need to get a little more information on it before we actually pull the trigger on anything, so we can justify it to the folks that are paying it.
I have a question. So wouldn't all those things be in your capital improvement plan?
A lot of the deals are straight, you know, like generator, back and forth, a lot of those big, big items, there's probably water system. Like I said, we put in a nineteen seventy eight, we have that, few quarters left to see what kind of light it's off, and then and still have a few more years, but something like that, we're going to have to definitely do something other than just parts and pieces that we just normally operate. And I will say, doing that three dollars and ninety cents, doing it in the right place, because the sewer side of it is our biggest expense, it's got the most expensive equipment and more of it than the water side. That's where we need to be on that.
So I just, I'm wondering, why wouldn't we put whatever you think is going to happen in the future in our capital improvement plan? Because that's what it would be, right, it's a capital expense.
Well, when I look at, you know, let's just say we need to replace the main line with a blue bar, you know, that's, that, that's a big right there to try to figure out when you want it.
Right, but we know it's going to go, so that's exactly the kind of thing that we should have in the capital improvement plan.
My last one, twenty years in my last five, you know, I guess we just have to keep tracking it, we're starting to get my, my main brakes and stuff. I've been figuring it out, but I was going with food on, so it's a year one, we're going to actually play it, we'll start that.
Okay.
I would think that our next closest one, which is in the capital improvement plan, is the be watered down each, each time it's light, that's what, is that what, do you hear?
No, that's out, that's out of the capital improvement plan because it wasn't until forty two or forty six.
Well, that, that was by then, but you've got to think, now you've got to start that process and planning to make that happen long for you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Well, the water line's actually a good example because you could program to eat that elephant one bite at a time and say, maybe I'm going to do a quarter mile this year and such that it is a palatable thing within whatever water increase, rate increase we may need to cover it. So you might look at doing a quarter mile small, you might do a mile and you'll raise the rate to a certain amount to get that mile this year. And plus it'd be less disruptive time wise and then program another section later and stuff, so it's a little easier. But in perhaps not wait till you have to do the whole thing. So that's, that's kind of the stuff, I guess, as I was referring to, we need to sit down and kind of look at that. And in that way, if we need to do a rate increase, we can say, because we're going to be doing this, this and this, and we think it's going to cost this. So, and I think it would eventually end up in the capital improvement plan or some equivalent expense statement there, I would think. Would you agree?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So may I make a motion? Mike?
Christie has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to add one thing, at least one commissioner asked yesterday if we could research when the last increase was and so wanted to give you that information before you vote, if that's okay. It was a quick dive for Heather trying to search minutes of past, because Chris said he absolutely couldn't remember one on the sewer side that was just us, not, we're not talking about a pass through. Heather's system, correct me if I'm wrong in saying this, but her ability to search only went back to twenty eleven. There was one found water sewer in twenty thirteen that was strictly a county pass through, it was not town. There was one found in twenty twenty one that again was a county kept pass through on the water side. And there was one found in twenty twenty four that was again a county pass through on the sewer side. So going back to twenty eleven, there wasn't one found on the town side only of where we're increasing the rate or something.
So. So just to clarify, since twenty eleven, there's never been a rate increase where Holden Beach got to keep the, the money.
Not that she could find in the minutes that she did a search, that request came in yesterday, so I'm sure if there's a fact checker of somebody that remembers their bill getting raised, that we might hear about that tomorrow. But she did a quick search of everything she could find, had a whole bunch of stuff laid out on her desk, and that's where we are with an answer for you.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, and it, it just goes to show, if we have a, do end up making a larger increase, well, we, we've been doing well for quite some time, it just hadn't been addressed.
And if I'm not bad in the statement, the last increase was, with the cavity, that was eighty two percent increase. Reverse all sources, plan, to plan, to plan, so to do it, they're still going to run.
So anyway, my point was, I think we should be tracking in the capital improvement plan instead of in the chart, what, you know. But it doesn't sound like he even knows when to put it in the capital improvement plan, because he's just watching it and it could be five years, could be ten years.
Is possible, you know, maybe in the future, that's more visible, I'm guessing, that's expensive, that's really hard to do than it is. Sounds easy, but I get people going, you know, that tracks, you know, we're targeting, we're getting a reason why, and breaking, stuff like that.
Did you track that now, number breaks you fix?
Well, it's probably main line breaks, I haven't had any main line breaks. They're not, they're mostly getting certified, so that's pretty big, just fast.
Don't brag about that.
No. That's the idea, never had something to take it, you get to take it before you go home.
I'd like to make a motion if I can, motion to, I'm trying to do this, motion to accept the three dollar and ninety cent increase and delete the two thousand gallon charges for water and sewer, but to track this future capital expenditure on the town manager's action tracker list. I know that was pretty confusing, does everybody get the gist of it?
I'll second that, Rick.
Scott, is anybody ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nobody? You know, Mr. and Madam Clerk. Okay. Last name?
I had one, I don't know if this is a change or just a formatting, but as we move from the budget message layout to the budget ordinance layout, I would like to see the Beach and Inlet Fund Reserve Fund align with the, the attachment C, which is the, is a long-term capital improvement or investment plan to fund the beach management. So just so it shows the balance in, any interest earned, any transfers coming in, and then shows the expense with what we've got for, available to use for a beach project. So it's really just a format change, I don't think, I don't think we're changing any numbers, it's just easier to flow, easier to watch the flow versus how it is in the budget message.
So I agree with that, and maybe we can do that one by consensus, I found the other format very confusing. I couldn't figure out where the six million was anywhere, whereas this makes sense to me, this is how much we have, this is how much we're putting in and this is going to be our balance at the end of the year, so I would support that, I don't know if it's a motion or just a suggestion, so we'll see if we can do it by consensus versus a motion.
You got a comment, Ms. Burke?
No, sir, we can do that.
Anybody have a problem? Maybe? Consensus? Anything, Anna?
I mean.
Nope. We got another agenda item, right?
How many other number? Four. Budget message, did it finish that, really? Yes. All right, Mr. Barpers.
Well, I'll start on it, Rick, finish, I just, again, this, the ADA work that the town staff got completed on time after we did the arbitration. It was, you know, it was something that we had promised we would look after and it took a whole lot more work than that. I think it was really anticipated to start with and I think that our staff went actually above and beyond what was actually required and did other things in conjunction with what Martha had laid out in her, in her agreement with the Department of Justice. So I think, I think the staff did a good job and they, they should be compensated somewhat for that. And I think we leave that to the town manager to. And I think we leave that to the town manager to, to accept those bonuses.
Kristi, I was going to ask, could you just refresh me on the number of projects and the total dollars we spent on not only the agreement, but other ADA things?
There are, I think, 11 items outlined in the agreement. As far as your ADA number, you guys related directly to those projects, you're currently over $500,000. And then other town projects that have been initiated with the planning department going out and looking at areas we could improve is 227,000 and counting at the current moment, which includes the amount for Jordan Boulevard's construction we're doing on the walkway now to improve that. It hasn't been paid out yet, but it's encumbered.
So we have spent this year alone 772K on ADA.
No, that's across since this started.
For you.
Oh, oh, for the, since we started the ADA agreement. But still, I think that the public, I hope you're making note over there.
And all of that was out.
772K.
And all of that was borne by the B part fund.
In ADA improvements.
And Mayor Holden, may I also add something? I think that Commissioner Parkes alluded to this in a prior meeting, but in doing research, there's no mechanism in the personnel policy that allows me just to execute this. So I couldn't do this action without it coming back before the board. The manager doesn't have the discretion to give, they used to, but it was taken out of the personnel policy at one point in time. So in order for this to occur, it had to come back before the board for the bonuses to be issued.
I just want to make a comment and I'd like to make a motion. I just want to thank staff, Tim is the staff, yes. And Chris, your guys too, for completing all these projects and you got them done by the deadline for the ADA agreement. Not often you get multiple projects going and you, you cross the finish line at the right time. So that's a big deal. Staff's efforts has greatly enhanced Holden Beach's ADA accessibility, but it's also greatly enhanced the beach in general. Great job. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve merit bonuses as requested by the interim town manager for completing the components of the ADA agreement.
I will second that, Rick.
And discussion?
Do we have them out?
Well, it's.
Well, within the motion.
In the, oh, excuse me, not to exceed $5,000.
And then explain that, total or individually?
Total, um, total award pool.
Right, I'll second the amended motion.
Okay.
I just want to say that I fully support that and add my, um, congratulations to Tim and his staff for getting all of that done for Holden Beach to make it much better for.
It, it was a town effort.
Yeah.
There was, there was no way we could possibly do it on our own.
Well, it's appreciated.
It was nothing for us to reach out in a moment's notice to try to get these projects finished, to have other departments step in and assist. So it was, it was, it was a complete and total town effort. And, and, and I know we're a two drone horn, but we did get the ADA stuff in mediation agreement, but we also covered a whole lot of other stuff. Talking about the multiple projects, we, we actually did a lot of things that we could do in the intermediary portion of trying to handle specs and permits and all of that that we could do and get some other stuff done. So it was, it was very busy in the ADA file.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll add my congratulations. I think it's a great accomplishment. I think it's very good news, we need good news. And I hope everybody's aware of what you and the town did in that regard. Thank you.
You may add. One thing I think that was omitted. I need to thank the property owners that create rental activity that pay for this. That's kind of an integral part, otherwise the taxpayers would pay for it. Is that right?
It was paid, the expenses came from the B part fund.
Those that are opposed to the renters, they just saved you that much money. Need to thank the renters and the homeowners who created the income for that. Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no? All right, probably moved by everybody. What else we got? All right, we're on number five, closed session. Madam Clerk?
Close session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181186 to consider the qualifications of respective employees.
Do we make a motion to go into it or what? Motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thank all of you for being here. Sorry you can't stay with us, but.